I have 6:00 PM, I'm going to call this November regular board meeting to order. If you would all join me for a moment of prayer, please.
Dear Heavenly Father, we thank you for the day you've given us. Lord, we ask that you look after all of us, give us wisdom and guidance as we go through this ninth and fourth, that we may go in the way that UC fit. Would we ask that you look after our community, our students and staff, keep them safe. We also ask that you look after our country and law enforcement, military personnel who are serving our country, keep them safe, look after them. All these things we ask in your name. Amen.
If you would join me for the pledge of allegiance.
To the Father, and to the United States of America, and to your Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, mercy. Okay, that brings down to Section 4, approval of the agenda. Dr. Townsend, do you have any amendments to the agenda?
We do, we'd like to request to amend the agenda to add approval of 20, year 2021, '22 recommended calendar.
Do I hear a motion to approve the agenda as amended?
I'll make the motion.
motion by Mr. Smith, do I hear a second?
Second.
Say by Ms. Ennis, any further discussion? Hall and眾?
Okay, can I say something just?
Yes, Ms. Penley here.
Dr. Townsend, we had just discussed her a little bit about possibly getting some community input. How do you feel about that now?
We can, it's, I've talked to, we've got a little community input, we've mainly got the admin here, teachers, we sent out to the teachers at the different leadership teams at the schools, received some early input in June, but nothing recently as in long-term. The only thing we checked on community-wise would be the Jeep Day in September. So if we didn't want to kind of get more than that, we wouldn't want to table it for a month and table it. And that's fine, too, if we do that, that wouldn't be a concern for us either.
Okay. I don't know if the community feels strongly one way or the other, I know in the past they have been giving input. And I know that at least come January, they're going to need to put in for vacations and things like that, so we don't have a lot of time. But I hate to just, you know, just have one calendar and say this is the way it's going to be, and it's been approved.
I'm flexible, seriously, it's okay.
I understand, I'm flexible the way, if y'all want to table and wait till December, I do think we need to do it by December, I think that's what we've always done. I'm fine with that. I do think, I remember last year, we did, we saw community input from a lot of different folks, correct me if I'm wrong, I think we were really looking at making some big calendar changes back then, and that's one of the main reasons we looked at it. I think we did staff-wide surveys and maybe some community surveys as well, because we were looking at different options. Now we've kind of got that feedback, and largely, I think, we didn't make any drastic changes last year, if I remember, because it actually came back, they really kind of wanted to stay pretty much what we had been doing. So that would be the only thing I'd add, is if we're not looking at drastic calendar changes, you know, I don't know if we needed to go to that depths, but if y'all want to, that's what I mean, too, that's just looking back.
Well, I know it's not appropriate for community input right now, but do you have any thoughts? Welcome to the board.
I'm new at this, so.
Okay, I don't want to throw a monkey wrench into it.
No, we can wait, that's no worries at all, like, so we've gotten a little input, but we could have gotten more input, so I do want to say that, we did get a little, but we didn't, I wouldn't say it was broad community input, so.
Has the faculty had input?
The leadership teams at the schools, they most of them did.
So this either went out into the schools and they got another?
To the leadership teams. So we can spread it some more, that wouldn't be no worries at all, I think we're still in good shape to wait one more month, I think that would be fine, I could retract the recommendation.
What sort of input did you get from the leadership team?
Some of the comments there was to make it, I was going to put this in my report later, to make the flip-flop, the early release date September 3rd, and make it a digital learning teacher work day, instead of just a, instead of just a half a day, do the Jeep Fest. We added another digital learning teacher work day in March, mid-semester kind of situation. We moved around winter break, where we made the first two days an automatic winter break, and the last three weather makeup days, before it was kind of, we were thinking about early on makeup days. But every school pretty much came back and said they'd rather have the February 21st, 22nd as the winter break, and the other three winter makeup days. And the winter makeup days is really kind of, when we talked about it over the summer, we planned on just digital learning and going from there, and that's what we were going to do. But then we had the power outage on that Friday during the storms, and you had a large percentage of the county that didn't have power. And even though we put in there that you could make up work later than the weekend or, you know, earlier the following week, we still had some concerns from the community of if that many people are out of power, is it really a good day for a digital day? And really catching that from the community, that's when we decided not to do that, and that was, I think that was good input we had from the community. So that's why we still have implement weather days, because we're still, our first year, and it's learning and the learning management system, and I think we're doing a good job with it, but we're not at that expert level yet, whether it's all of us, or parents, whoever else. And so that's why I think for at least another year, we need to implement weather days on the calendar. That was the biggest question there. It was like I said, we received some input, but I think we could receive more, so I don't mind asking y'all to table it for another month, and let's talk about it for the next few weeks, and I'll make sure the schools have a chance to fully talk about it, you know, make sure everybody did, and then make sure the community has a chance to respond. I'll have Ms. Shove help me draft something up, get a community survey out there, have let them give comments, because it's one of those where, I mean, we could develop five calendars, two calendars, whatever else, and you hate to do a straw poll and do 51 to 49, and, you know, I think it may be best if we kind of look at the input, say, give us suggestions about your days, do you want more professional learning days, do you want more digital days, less digital days, get that kind of input from the community, and I think that would be, I think that would be fine.
Okay. Well, there are four other people, and I certainly honored their vote. I, for one, would like to get community input before we make this a final, final thing, and if we can wait and vote on it next month, I'd like to, but that's, that's 20% of the vote, that's, that's my opinion, so.
I understand, respect that.
I leave it to the other four to make the decision.
Mr. Chair, I think it's fine to pull it, let's wait, Alex, we've received a little community input, but nothing, it could be broadened, and I think that would be fine to broaden it.
Okay. Any other thoughts, discussion? If not, we will wait until December and gather more input, and so I'm going to change, I need a motion now to just approve the agenda as presented. Do I hear a motion to approve the agenda as presented? Motion by Mr. Smith, do I hear a second?
Second.
Say by Ms. Ennis, any further discussion? Hall and眾? I have none opposed, agenda is approved. Okay. Section 5, 4-H recognition, I'm going to turn it over to Director of Public Relations, Ms. Destiny Shumpert.
Good evening. We are excited tonight to have 4-H from Pickens County with us. Before I invite them up for their presentation, I want to share with you that Pickens County is currently without an extension agent, and they have been for quite a while. In order for the activities and programs of 4-H to continue, things must be done through the leadership of dedicated volunteers, and with COVID restrictions, many of the children are participating virtually in doing their activities and projects at home. Pickens County 4-H could not continue to offer what it does without two invested and retired from Pickens County teachers, Mrs. Melvina Carlin and Mrs. Tracy Buckingham. They have led the way in our community for our students to provide those opportunities that 4-H does to all the children in the county. They do have a video that we're going to show, and then Mrs. Carlin and Mrs. Buckingham will come up and finish out their presentation, so enjoy the video.
Is there sound?
Yes.
We want to thank you for the honor of giving us this time tonight to show you what 4-H is doing despite the fact that we have nobody in charge. Ms. Carlin and myself have just taken that on. I have 35 years of volunteering with 4-H, and she has more than that. We believe in this program and what it can do for kids. A lot of people think it used to be just about agriculture, but we, what we do is we get a kid and we say, what do you like? Dylan Lowe came in last year and he said, I like to talk about tennis shoes. I was like, okay, we got a place for you. It doesn't matter what they come to us with, we can shake that and make it into something for a 4-H project that they can do. We want to give you a little token of our appreciation, they made some little flower arrangements for you guys, and so we'll have them come up at this time. We have Dylan Lowe, Micah Newton with us, we have Molly Hooker, we have Ryan Johnson, and Sophia Scott. We also have a little handout for you that gives you a highlight of what we've been doing. As you can imagine, with, just like with the school system, COVID has put things in a little different perspective, we have to watch what we're doing and be safe, and I hope the children be safe at the same time. Thank you again for your time and your attention, we appreciate it.
They do make a picture for the portfolios, because that's the number of goals.
Please go get a picture of them.
So we definitely want your pictures.
The caller, caller, right.
I look better when you're in front of me.
We did this on staff.
Okay, wait just a second, guys, I will mention, that Dylan, I will mention, just a second. I just want one for myself. Okay, guys, here you go, one, two, three.
Thank you.
Thank y'all, thank y'all. Thank y'all very much, appreciate our gifts, and congratulations on all your hard work. Thank y'all, thank you, Ms. Carlin. Okay, we'll go down to Section 6, superintendent reports, Dr. Townsend?
Okay, thank you, Chairman Green. Our first recourse was Ms. Amy Smith, our CFO.
Thank you, Dr. Townsend, this is great talk, first. Give them a just a moment to pull up the general fund. Our FY '21 general fund revenue collected through the end of October was 11.16% of our budgeted revenue. The expenditures were at 23.89% of the approved budget. Please remember, when you hear those numbers, especially for our new person, the first two months of tax money, do you mind, I'm just going to roll into the prior year, and that's state recommendation, we follow those recommendations. We are in good shape, we've got a great fund balance, and we'll continue to monitor all the categories, we are right on target. And if you'll go to the SPOSS collection. Our SPOSS revenue for October 2020 wasn't quite as, as nice as it was last month, I do understand that the inflow that we had last month, that, that great $800,000 was from a coding error, and somewhere between Department of Revenue and a vendor, and that was money that was collected, it was just coded the wrong place and was corrected and sent to us from some prior time. Our collection for this past month was $514,607.25. We earned interest of $1,954.66. Our expenditures totaled $39,320.32. That brought our month-end SPOSS balance to $6,217,378.94. We are just along with our SPOSS project, we have our SPOSS six that passed on the most recent election, so we're very pleased with that, thank you. Thank you to everyone who talked it up for us in the community, presented, supported us, it is a very important in cash inflow for us, especially when it comes to large construction projects. Those, I know we don't always build a school, but we do quite a few, as you know, renovations, modifications to existing buildings, and that is a method that does not have to come out of local property taxes, we get to share the wealth and collecting that with anyone who passes through Pickens County and spends money. So we're very pleased with that and look forward to planning all those projects with the board. John, any questions? And of course, I'm always going to plug that we have no debt at this moment.
Thank you, Ms. Ennis. Okay, next up is our COO, Mr. Stacy Gillian.
I'm going to take this mask off so you can hear me, even though Ms. Penley said it looked very real.
And so do I.
Maintenance, well, this is 2020, right? And you know anything can happen, so we did have an accident a couple of weeks ago, where our maintenance guys got hit in the rear end on 515, and he was dead set still, it knocked him into another car, went into another car, which went into another car, how hard he got hit, so destroyed our vehicle, of course, he's okay.
Let's not use the term dead.
But he's, he's doing, he's doing okay, he was just shook up a little bit, went to hospital, got checked out, went home, and went back at work Monday, which I didn't let him do anything but other than some paperwork and take some of our training classes and stuff, so he could re-accommodate his way, and get to feeling a little better. So, still 2020, we had a fire in our, in our, one of our auxiliary maintenance shops, it's an old ag building at the GMS campus, and it's where we keep all our woodworking stuff, that was actually part of that program at one time, and when we do a lot of, we do a lot of assembly and building of different things, and all the, all the frames and stuff that's around all the schools, that's got kids' pictures and coats and stuff like that. Actually, David was building two new ones for the high school, stained them Friday evening, laid rags over on top of the trash can, they combust it and burned it, helped the place on fire, so. It's not, it's mainly cosmetics and windows, a door, just a few chairs sitting around melted, one cabinet that had some hand tools in it, so it's not a big expense, we'll have to clean it up, have to paint it, probably have to change the light fixtures during the firefighters doing their job, it knocks them down with all the pressure, the hoses and all that stuff, so there's going to be a little expense, we've turned into GSBA, and they're going to, they're sending a guy out to look at it this week, or probably next week now, but we're good there. Transportation, we have a bus driver training class that will be going on on the 16th through the 20th, and we do have three or four drivers, so maybe we'll pick up one or two there, usually we get at least one. And the drivers, by the end of this week, will have completed all their skills assessments, which we have to do each year, just to test them again, to make sure they're checking their buses out right, and doing the right things when they let the kids on off the buses. Food service, Beth really said I didn't really have to say any of this, that she was just sort of vetting to me the other day, her frustration, that she's going through her fund balance rapidly, because we're not serving kids like we were. We had gotten, pre, on March 13th, pre-pandemic, we were serving 2,800 lunches and 1,400, or 1,500 breakfasts a day. October the 9th, which was two weeks before, before we went out for the two weeks for Harmony, we were serving 1,800 lunches and about 1,200 breakfasts a day. Now that we've been out and we were delivering the meals and all, we were at 500 meals for lunch and 500 meals for breakfast, so it really, that's a hit, that's a hit. We're feeding free, we can't get them to take it for free. See, if they take it and we document it, we still get reimbursed, but right now, we're not getting reimbursed because we're not putting the food out. So we're, we're going to do a little blitz here, we're going to do some advertising, we're going to do, she, Beth, did a really good job of calling and trying to get people to fill out the free introduce form, because they think because they're available, it's available now, free anyway, they don't have to do that. Well, it does, it affects our funding, which we don't get the numbers correct, so we're about 4% lower than we have been on our free introduce, so that's another challenge, but we're working on it, she's trying, I really think there'll be some leniency force all over from one up here, and they'll go back to numbers prior to this to help everybody out, it's not just us, it's the areas across the whole state. But, but it's not really affecting our title ones, because they're still exactly where they need to be, so we'll get their money, so. Any questions?
Do you think that we'll need to help supplement from the general fund before this is over?
Not next year, she, she was, she is so good at managing money and taking care of our accounts, she's still okay.
Okay.
She actually had, in her audit, she was a little over what she should have in reserve, so she's feeding off that now, so excellent work by doing that, they don't want you to get too much money above and beyond. They don't want you to get too much money above and beyond what they like you to keep in reserve. But she's okay right now. But she tells me, she said, "Every time I look at that bank account, my stomach just turns flip."
Well, it's a trend.
She does not want to come to the board and ask for money. She really doesn't want to because she said, "I'm supposed to be self-sufficient and I'm trying my best."
But it's 2020.
Yeah, it is 2020.
All right. Thank you.
All right, thank you.
All right, thank you, Mr. Gillian. Okay, next, our COVID-19 guidance. Ms. Libitor?
Good evening. We just wanted to share some hard work that Mrs. Smith has compiled for us. You have a copy in front of you titled "School Health Services: Criteria for School Exclusion, Building Closures, and Transitioning to Distance Learning." What Ms. Smith has done is compiled all the research that she has gathered in the past couple of months. And I have to stress that that research changes on a regular basis. And you'll see that towards the end. But the most current research is what is guiding us in any decision whether or not to close a building, transition to distance learning, quarantine, and so forth. So if you work your way through, the first couple of pages includes the research. The research and the action steps that we take according to the situation that we have at hand. Now, please note that these are not definitive yes or no questions. These are just our guiding principles that we use to help us make these choices and decisions. If you switch to the fourth page, it starts a matrix. This is probably one of the easier parts to read after you get through all the research and all the background data supporting why we're making these choices the way we do. It outlines a different criteria that we're looking at and the action steps that we intend to take according to each criteria. So the first one starts off with the spread of infection increasing in Pickens County as a whole, the entire county, not just the district. Criteria two is the spread of infection significantly increasing within the school community. Criteria three, the cluster of outbreak or illness is present. Now, that's actually something pretty significant because that could be within the community or within the school system. Any clusters, you'll see, is two or more, help me explain this. She's really good at the lingo. I'm not as good at the medical lingo. But two or more connected cases in EpiLink. I can never say the full word. Anyway, an EpiLink. It's a lot easier to say. But if the cases are connected, we're actually researching a possible EpiLink within the community right now. We have had some within the schools. And that has caused the quarantines also in the past couple of months. If you go on to the next page, criteria four, this is continued congregant gatherings and if they place a burden on the local hospital system. That's something that we have to keep in mind. And we have been in contact with the hospital systems. We keep up with how many beds they have available. If we continue what we're doing, is it going to be an undue burden for them? Criteria five, surveillance of student and staff attendance. This is really important. As you well know, if we have too many teachers out, we cannot conduct school and the lessons in an efficient manner. Criteria six, size and characteristics of student and staff populations. And that could be any type of population, whether it be medically fragile population or any certain subset of a population we have to look at. We have to take all these into account whenever we look at any possible building closure or large quarantine. And criteria seven, which is very important, the impact it has on families. We all know that anytime that we change anything within the educational system, it impacts families in various ways. And of course, the last one, the one we all like, the cessation of infectious disease. We can all be back at school in a regular manner. But we follow these guidelines and action steps to help guide our actions as a school system. If you flip over to the last couple of pages, past the resources, we have an addendum. And these are just some of the examples of the research that Mrs. Smith has found around the country to help support what we are finding. This evening, just before the meeting, she came and showed me some CDC numbers, which actually directly correlate with what we've been doing. So we're on the exact right track. If you flip to, I should have numbered these pages and I apologize for not doing it. Page like this. That's it. That's it, right there. I like this one because on the bottom to the left, it shows just how fast the numbers change on a regular basis. To give you another example, Ms. Smith and I were talking a little bit before the meeting and I was telling her the numbers we had today. And she looked at it and she says, "Well, they're different now." And that was just within an hour, three more people had been put into quarantine. And so it literally changes by the minute, by the hour, by the day. So nothing stays constant in this world right now. 2020, right? So if you would like to look over it, feel free. If you have any questions, please let us know. But we just want to share what we're trying to use as our guiding principles. Were you going to say something, Dr. Townsend?
No, I'll say, thank you. Any questions, y'all? Very thorough. All right, thank you. Next, I'm going to get the calendar. Let's talk about that for a second. We talked a little about it earlier. Just to add a couple of things to it. The, we are planning on doing a stagger start again. That's one thing we heard from many parents, many teachers. They love that stagger start we did beginning of the year. So that's one of those things I wish we all could take care of. I think the first person to mention might have been Mr. Wallace. He's back over there. He might have been the first one. And we did scoff at it. We're like, "Let's think about this." And then it really just kind of took off from there and really did well. And so it's one of those things where it worked out well. So we're looking at doing that again. I mentioned earlier about the different breaks, things like that. You saw the winter break and the fall break. A week off for Thanksgiving. We think that's important. I think everybody's gotten accustomed to that. It's a good family time. And then also, one of the things you have to do, people look at the calendar and go, some people will say, "Hey, didn't we start after Labor Day? Finished before Memorial Day?" Basically, you try and get in your 180 days for the kids. So 190 days overall for teachers and kids. Kids, the students don't go along as the teachers do, of course. So you do have to count the days and you'll see a few more days in the spring than you will in the Christmas break just based on how the calendar is adjusted. So that's kind of what we're looking at there now. We'll put out a survey, not a survey, but something for comments from the general community. Like I said, we received some, but we can definitely receive more. And so kind of go from there. We've already got quite a few comments from the schools and we'll take additional comments from them as well. Any questions about the calendar or anything you kind of have questions about or something that you may go, "You know, have y'all really thought about this?" or anything else? It's okay to ask those kind of questions. Okay, if not, that's it for now. And Mr. Green, that concludes the superintendent's report.
Thank you, Dr. Townsend. Bring us down to section seven, action items. We have several action items tonight. First action item, approval of financial reports. These are the three reports that Ms. Smith gave tonight. Do you hear a motion to approve those financials as presented? Motion by Mr. Smith. Do you hear a second?
Second.
Same by Mr. Holland. Any further discussion? Holland favored. Five and none opposed. Those are approved. Action item D, approval of personnel. Laura went over the personnel action report. Do you hear a motion to approve that as presented? Motion by Mr. Holland. Do you hear a second?
Second.
Same by Mr. Smith. Any further discussion? All in favor. PAR is approved as presented. This next item is six policies. We approved all six of these policy changes last month tentatively. They laid on the table for 30 days. So you missed that, Mr. Holland. So quickly, they're all just changes basically in language to the policies. All pertaining to, well, I'll just go through them real quick. Do you have those ones? First one is equal opportunity employment. Second one is sexual harassment of employees. Third is equal educational opportunities. Fourth is sexual harassment of students. Fifth, student health services. And sixth, medication request for approval. And Mr. Landon went over all these. It's just kind of changing language. No deep change in anything. So laid on the table and I'm assuming, was there no public comment? We did not receive any comments. No comments. So do you have any questions? Okay. Do you hear a motion to give the final approval of these policy changes? Motion by Mr. Smith. Do you hear a second? Same by Ms. Ennis. Any further discussion? All in favor? Five and none opposed. Those are approved. Section D, or item D, excuse me. Approval of amendment to the 2020-2021 Pickens County Skills Student Code of Conduct. This is change in language, I believe, as well to the medication management section. Excuse me. Any questions on that? Do you hear a motion to approve that change to the code of conduct? Motion by Mr. Smith. Do you hear a second? Same by Ms. Ennis. Any further discussion? All in favor? Five and none opposed. Thank you. Item E, approval of memorandum of understanding with the Doss State University. This is typical. We do these with several different colleges and universities. Any questions on that? Do you hear a motion to approve that MOU? Motion by Ms. Finley. Do you hear a second? Same by Mr. Holland. Any further discussion? All in favor? Five and none opposed. Item F, approval of student teaching letter agreement with Western Governors University. Again, same concept. Any questions on that? Do you hear a motion to approve that agreement? Motion by Ms. Finley. Do you hear a second? Same by Ms. Ennis. I started to think you two were protesting over here or something. You know what? Just a little, you know, I'm saying, okay. I have a motion by Ms. Finley, same by Ms. Ennis. Any further discussion? All in favor? Five and none opposed. That is approved. Item G, approval of natural gas contract. Crazy dates already that time of year again. I think we had, looked like four bids.
Yes.
Is that correct?
And they're in order as of the,
Want to pop that up this morning?
What we feel is the best.
Oh, right.
The top one is the one we have now. It's True Natural Gas. It's actually the same provider. They are the low bidder. So, Dr. Townsend, I'm recommending to you that this be the provider.
So the recommendation is to stay with True Natural Gas and it was the low bidder. Any questions on that? Do you hear a motion to approve the natural gas contract? Motion by Mr. Smith. Do you hear a second?
Second.
Same by Ms. Ennis. Any further discussion? All in favor? Five and none opposed. That is approved. Good action items we'd like to see. Item H, approval of change order number one at Pickens Junior High School for the PAC. We get a deduction of just over $93,000, I believe. Is that correct?
Yep.
So we're glad to have that. And we'll commend Rowan Associates and Carol Daniel Construction and Stacy and his staff for that. So that's good news. Do you hear a motion to approve that change order? Motion by Mr. Smith. Do you hear a second?
Second.
Same by Mr. Holland. Any further discussion? All in favor? Five and none opposed. I know Ms. Smith's happy. And another change order, this also at Pickens Junior High, this per phase 2B. And this was the amount of, what was the amount on that one? About $87,000 there.
$87,000.
Do you hear a motion to approve that change order? Motion by Mr. Holland. Do you hear a second?
Second.
Same by Ms. Finley. Any further discussion? All in favor? Five and none opposed. Thank you. Okay, item J, approval of minutes. We have the October 8th regular board meeting. And it's really confused me at first because I'm used to having a call meeting before. I had to go back and realize we didn't have that. So I thought, I knew better. I knew you didn't miss anything, Martha. And then the November 6th call meeting.
That was a work session.
Everybody's had a chance to review those. Do you hear a motion to approve the minutes as presented?
I'll make that motion.
Motion by Ms. Finley. Do you hear a second? Same by Mr. Holland. Any further discussion? All in favor? Five and none opposed. Okay, six and eight board comments. I just want to quickly say, as I, I don't know if y'all get bragged on enough, but y'all really are doing a phenomenal job. I've told a couple of y'all, I have not heard much, which that's good news. And I think it really is a credit to all the hard work y'all are doing. Y'all do so much. And I think really things are going very well. And I really just appreciate how y'all do. And I'll quickly brag on Mr. Wallace, but he's reflective of all y'all. All y'all do tons of stuff all the time that people don't even realize. I had a mother who had lost her son, a young PHS graduate, a few months ago, reach out to me and she had lost his high school diploma and diploma covering. It was very important to her to have that. And so she reached out to me and I immediately reached out to Mr. Wallace and Dr. Townsend. And like always, Mr. Wallace said, "Absolutely. I'll take care of it. Not a problem." And he delivered that diploma to me tonight. And I'll give it to that mother this weekend and make her very happy. So I appreciate that. You know, they do stuff all the time like that that goes unnoticed. But I appreciate it. So any other comments?
I'd like to say welcome to our new board member, Aaron Holland.
Any other comments? None being. I'll entertain a motion to adjourn. Motion by Mr. Smith. Do you hear a second? Same by Ms. Ennis. Any further discussion? All in favor? Five and none opposed. We are adjourned at 6:47. Thank you all for being here.